Trustee Seba?
I recommend the Crestwood Board of Education.
The session?
Recommended action by trustee Seba, supported by trustee Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education come out of closed session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in, back to open session, and our open session is now adjourned. And we will now call, I'll now call the Board of Education. Crestwood School Board of Education meeting to order at 7:12 PM.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you.
Support.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Study session by trustee Seba, supported by trustee Baydun. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Now, good evening and welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education. And I'll call this meeting to order at 7:12 PM. Mr. Secretary, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Falas?
Here.
Trustee Seba?
Here.
Trustee Williamson?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Ammon's here. Trustee Baydun?
Here.
Madam President?
Here.
All here.
Thank you, okay. And tonight's treat for leading the pledge of allegiance are Hillcrest students from teachers Mrs. Bazey and Mrs. Salome's class. We have, and I'll, I'll call your names and then you guys can come forward. We have Serene Riska, Eileen Yassin, Daniel Awada, Ava Jaber, and Noah Owens, and Caesar Awada. Can you guys come up here? Excellent. We'll ask your teachers to join us. And we're gonna face the flag.
Flags over here, guys.
Flags right over here.
Oh, it's always, it's up there too, you're right.
Okay, we'll go to this one. Let's go to this one.
We're gonna use this one, okay? So what do we need to do? We need to put our hands on our hearts? Perfect. We're gonna look at the flag, and ready, start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I live in a land where justice stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Okay, stay up here. You guys stay up here. Daniel Awada? Here you go, thank you. Eileen Yassin? Thank you so much. Serene Riska? There you go, thank you. Ava Jaber? Thank you Ava. And Nova Owens? Thank you Nova. And Caesar Awada? Thank you so much.
Great job, guys.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you. You guys wanna turn around so we can get a picture? Turn around, perfect. Excellent, thank you guys. Mrs. Bazey and Mrs. Salome would like to thank you too for coming. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, can we read the consent agenda, recommendation, action?
The Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the February 27, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 6, 2023, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 6, 2023.
Support. Okay, recommended action by Secretary Ammon, supported by trustee Seba, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the February 27, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 6, 2023, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 6, 2023. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item is business report, approval of requisitions. Ms. Morgan?
The attached list of requisitions are items that the buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Seba?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1. Support.
Okay, recommended action by trustee Seba, that the Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1, supported by trustee Ammon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, number two, approving, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed prior to the Board approval. The items are staff reimbursement, maintenance repairs, and miscellaneous supplies.
Madam Secretary, Madam President, I'm sorry.
Sir?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2.
Support.
Recommended action by trustee Baydun, supported by trustee Seba, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, number three, approval of out-of-state field trip. Riverside Middle School would like to take the eighth grade class to trip, on a trip to Cedar Point. The trip is being partially sponsored by CAPP. The request is attached.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Ammon?
I recommend that the Crestwood School Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip to Cedar Point for Riverside Middle School eighth grade students, see attachment 4.83.
Support.
Thank you, recommended action by trustee Ammon, supported by trustee Seba, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip to Cedar Point for Riverside Middle School's eighth grade students, see attachment 4A3. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, I have a question too.
Trustee Seba?
Just a question round, is there, is the insurance, I hate to say this, but this is a theme park where people could potentially get hurt. What, what's, what's the deal? Is this like, go at your own risk, is it?
The liability is on the student because it's a field trip and it's permission for them to go. Now, if it happened in an accident on the bus there, but once they're there, the field trip, permission slip takes into effect.
Is this a school bus they're going on, or a private bus?
No, they're gonna do a private bus.
So the private bus has their own insurance and it's not on the school?
Correct.
Thank you, I just need...
No worries.
Trustee Barry?
I have a couple of questions. So staff is participating in this?
Staff and CAPP parents, yes.
Okay, so there will be staff members?
Yes.
The second question is, if you go to the Riverside website, it's a $75, and now I'm reading it here, it's a $65. So which is it?
I will have to verify.
Okay.
Seventy-five.
Okay, 'cause the information they provided was that sheet, so I'll verify.
So this isn't correct?
We just have to update the seven, it's just $75.
Okay.
This is the information that's submitted to the office.
Trustee Baydun?
So, I think I read somewhere where it said it was sponsored by CAPP?
Partially, yes. The students have to pay for their tickets, whereas CAPP is going to pay for their buses.
Ah, so the student pays for the admission to the park?
Correct.
And CAPP pays?
Yes.
I just didn't understand that.
Okay, any, hearing no more discussion, all those in...
One more question, I'm sorry. We don't deny anybody if they wanna go, correct?
I would have to get that information, I'm not...
I mean, I would hope that we don't deny anybody if they can't afford to pay it.
Oh, for not being able to afford to pay, no, there's...
For, for a ticket.
Right, but behavior issues, I would have to say...
No, 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 no. I'm saying that if they...
For financial reasons, if somebody, the school will find a way.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Please let me know.
Definitely.
If there's anybody.
Yes, please.
Definitely.
Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, have a great time.
Thank you, number four, approval of cell tower terms. The current cell tower lease agreement is set to expire January 2024. The district has been leasing the cell tower easement since 2001. The Crestwood District Administration would like to work with Crown Castle and Trune to develop a lease agreement for a 50-year lease for the amount of a one-time lump sum payment of $1,425,000. The current location of the cell tower does not impact the design of our new outdoor activity complex, and there will be no additional space being leased. This will be the entire amount of the revenue for the length of the lease agreement.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Seba?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the administration to create in conjunction with Trune Law Firm, a cell tower lease agreement with Crown Castle in the amount of $1,425,000 for 50 years, the attachment 4A4. Support.
Okay, recommended action by trustee Seba, supported by trustee Ammon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve administration to create a conjunction with Trune Law Firm, a cell tower lease agreement with Crown Castle in the amount of $1,425,000 for 50 years. See attachment 4A4. Any discussion?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Okay, I got Mo Dan Salwa, Dan Nadia.
If, for any reason, we wanted out of this contract, right? Would it be the replenishment of the funds, you know, based on what we've already used? For example, if in three years, you know, we come back and we say, alright, well, in those three years, we're breaking down the 1.425 over three years, we don't want this here anymore, right? Can we give back that money to the tower company? And I know we'd have to pay for, for it to be disassembled, 'cause that was the case previously. Is this still a possibility, or are we locked in for 50 years with no wiggle room?
So the good thing is, this board vote is just giving us permission to start discussing the contract, so now that we know the terms. When we get into the contract negotiations through Trune Law Firm, these are the things that we're going to be asking them to investigate research and put into the contract if possible. So, being that now, if the board approves, 'cause I know there's, there's a vote on the table, if the board approves for us to negotiate these terms, then the next phase will be the contract language, and that will be one of our bullet points.
Thank you.
Salwa?
So, I know this was brought up one time before now, and we discussed the difference or negotiating with them already. Even though there's not a lease agreement yet, the breakdown of this was like 2,200, right, a month, versus the 8,000 we're getting now?
Correct.
And 50 years is a long time. So we weren't able to negotiate anything better than this amount or amount of years?
No, when we went back to renegotiate, they wanted to add more space, so they wanted to lease more space in order to give us more money and lengthen the contract. The problem is that you run into is, with the 5G and all of the different things, they're easy to build, the little towers or the little things attach them everywhere, so cell towers are not as high priority anymore, but they don't want to dismantle them, 'cause it still costs them a lot. So if they can lease that space for a long period of time, they know it's there and they can upgrade it, but realistically, with the 5G and all those different networks, they're putting it on smaller buildings or different, it's much smaller.
So basically, as in the past where this is, this was prime real estate for them, it's no longer prime real estate. They don't need us as much as we need them.
Well, I mean, I don't know other businesses, I mean, I know we say anybody would do it, but I really don't think anybody would do it, but that's just me.
So Salwa, there's another tower locally, that's not even being used, that I have from outside knowledge, that they pay the landlord and there's nothing on it as a secondary backup in case this doesn't work. I just want you to know that. It's a long...
I mean, I, I still don't think this is, this is enough.
It's not enough? Well, you can negotiate, but they've been negotiating, and this is all they're coming back with.
And, and on top of that, and I know Nadia is probably the only one that remembers, and I know we said that there's been documentation showing otherwise, but there's documentation, I'm sure, on both sides, where we had parents from Timber Trail, I believe it was, attributing the illnesses, the cancer, to this tower. I don't know how true, okay?
There's scientific data to dispute that. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're not, they don't believe that, I'm just telling you, based on scientific data, you know? So I'm not saying these people are speaking wrong, they really believe that, but the scientific data speaks against that, that's all.
Nadia?
My take on that is, like Salwa said, there was a group of people that came to the board. I will put people's health before I put the interest of money first. So if the evidence showed from the community right in that area, that there were that many people that had cancer, it's very concerning to me. So I think we need to think about the community that lives right there, and what they believe is going to affect them. So, just to say that.
So, this is strictly regarding the contract, okay? So, I know you're negotiating now. One thing I would like to see is you install an amort, an amortized table with them, to where if, well, right now, let's say it's, what was the amount? 1.425? That's year one. Year two, maybe it's 1.35. Year three, and so on and so forth. What that does is, I think we have big plans eventually in this district, right? I think eventually, we, we, we keep growing as a district, we need to utilize every, all the space we need. What this does eventually, in three years, five years, 10 years, I don't know what the number, but definitely less than 50, it allows us to pay back something to restore that land for the district, in case we ever have future plans in that area.
With the termination of the contract, yes.
Yes, so it, it basically, it's a 30-year, you get the same one for your mortgage statement. I don't know if you have, I, I have a mortgage statement. So, one thing you have to do is you look at the amortize schedule, and every year it reduces. Now, in the beginning, yes, there's a lot of principal, but this is different. This is a nonprofit public school that there's no interest involved, right?
Understood.
That's a debt schedule, huh? Amortization schedules are debt schedules, and there's, there's really no debt, this is a contractual obligation.
I'm saying if we ever wanna remove it...
So it's a buyout.
It's a buyout.
What you're looking for is a buyout, which is what I mentioned earlier, you're looking for a buyout by year, based on straight dollar per dollar, per month slash per 12 months. But they have to agree to that, and if, by the way, if they don't agree to that, that changes everything, because you're not gonna get locked in anything for 50 years.
So the finance guy said it better.
Any further...
You knew what I was thinking.
Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote on this, Mr. Secretary, please?
Sure. Trustee Falas?
No.
Trustee Seba?
Yes.
Trustee Williamson?
Yes.
Trustee Ammon, yes. Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Baydun?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, have it.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Next item?
Thank you, then, close my report.
Personnel report, Dr. Lazar?
Good evening. On the personnel report today, we have two non-instructional appointments. The first is the appointment of a media paraprofessional for Hillcrest and Crestwood High School, Ms. Sarah El Alisawi. Ms. Alisawi has two children at Hillcrest. She has previously volunteered within the school and is currently attending Henry Ford Community College, and is excited to join the Hillcrest team.
Madam Chair? Trustee Falas?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action, action item 5A1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Thank you, recommended action by trustee Falas, supported by trustee Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5A1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item?
The second is the appointment of a principal secretary for Crestwood High School, Ms. Annette Baccarosa. Ms. Baccarosa has over 30 years of secretarial and office experience, 10 of which have been in a school office setting. She prides herself on being highly dependable, organized, and delivering friendly service.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Williamson?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action 5A2, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Recommended action by trustee Williamson, supported by trustee Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5A2, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item?
Our next item is an instructional appointment for a fourth grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary, Ms. Julie Torsch. Ms. Torsch earned her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Baker College. She went on to earn her Master of Arts in Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages from Eastern Michigan University. She has 15 years of instructional experience and enjoys implementing project-based learning and small group instruction. She comes to us from Westwood Heights Schools in Flint, Michigan.
Madam Chair? Trustee Falas?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5B1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Thank you, recommended action by trustee Falas, supported by trustee Ammon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5B1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item?
And our last action item this evening is an administrative appointment for an athletic director, Mr. Jeffrey Hesigian. Mr. Hesigian holds a Bachelor of Business Administration and a Bachelor of Science in Sports and Entertainment Promotions Management from Northwood University, where he was also a member of the university football team. Additionally, Mr. Hesigian is completing his administration, administrative certification through Eastern Michigan University. He has 14 years of experience in a school setting, serving in the role of, roles of Dean of Students, Athletic Director, Coach, Personal Trainer, and Mentor. In addition to leading his teams to MHSAA district championships and regional final appearances, as well as being awarded Coach of the Year honors, Mr. Hesigian has assisted over 40 student athletes in obtaining college scholarships, and his student athletes have achieved 100% graduation rate.
Madam Chair?
Trustee Ammon?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5.C.1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support.
Thank you, recommended action by trustee Ammon, supported by trustee Williamson, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item 5C1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion?
I had, I do have a question. We, we haven't hired, had anybody in that position for a while. Can you, like, share their job description with us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Board. So, first item is an action item, 21st Century Learning Program, open enrollment for grades seven through 12.
Sorry, mine says no action item, hold on.
Yeah, me too.
That's okay.
There's no action item.
It's here, it's on the back, at the superintendent's report. If you go to the tab, it's under A. 21st Century Learning Program, open enrollment for grades seven through 12. Does anybody wanna make that recommended action?
Madam Chair?
Trustee Baydun?
I would like the Crestwood Board of Education to recommend that the 21st Century Learning Program, open enrollment for grades seven through 12.
Support.
Recommended action by trustee Baydun, supported by trustee Seba, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve expanding open enrollment to the 21st Century Learning Program for grades seven through 12. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I have a...
Okay, Nadia, Mo, Dan Salwa?
I guess my concern is, has this been reviewed with attorneys? Because...
Yes.
What's the effect if these people, I mean, these students, I'm not stereotyping or anything, 'cause I don't know who these students will be. What about if they decide that, once they're online, that they wanna come to brick and mortar, and they're out of district, and the taxpayer money, you know, I mean, that, that's where the concern is for me. Have we consulted with the attorneys to see what the...
We've consulted with RISA, being that it's a program, we can put any stipulations we need, and we also reviewed other districts that had the same stipulation. So we worked with RISA on this project, because RISA would be ultimately who approves this once the Board gives us the go-ahead.
Okay, so, do we have those stipulations?
That was sent to you in Friday updates, the last three, four weeks.
Okay, well, I guess I missed those.
I just, I don't...
Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, we had, yeah, I'm sorry, Nadia, then Mo, then Salwa.
So this is a virtual program?
Correct.
And if they do decide they wanna go brick and mortar, they have to go back to the school district that they live in, right?
Correct, unless if they purchase a property in the Crestwood School District or rent property.
Okay, so if they're...
So they can play sports here.
It's open, part of the virtual programming is, it is open to extracurricular activities, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Salwa?
So this allows us to collect from each student, I guess, like student count day, like, they're still our students, right? Crestwood students.
Yep, once they register, they are our students.
And so they were, being our students, all of our programs are available to them, right? Besides athletics, like, if there's any special programs, right?
Extracurriculars, yes.
And if they are enrolled in this, and they're not district, if they have a younger sibling or a sibling that wants to enroll, because they're already enrolled as a virtual, can their younger sibling come as a brick and mortar, or we've already established that's not gonna happen?
This is purely the virtual program, grade seven through 12. It does not impact any other programs or any other classes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more question, are we capping it?
Yes, we have a capped amount, I don't have the document in front of me, but there is a capped amount, so that we don't overtax our teachers.
Any further discussion?
You, you have a rough idea of what that number is?
Penny, do you remember what that number is off the top of your head? Andrea, Penny?
I wanna say it was 80, but I can't sort to that.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna say between 65 and 70. So more, no more than 35 per teacher?
And we're cur...
Pressured teacher to mentor.
And we currently have a total of...
51?
Oh, no, it goes up to 50, I'm sorry. It was between 80 and 100 was the new, thinking of currently.
Because we currently have 50 to 60 students, so we have 30 spots, 30 to 35 spots available.
Yes.
And this has been through conversation with Mr. Awad, Mrs. O'Hara, and the virtual team.
The virtual team was very involved in the numbers, where they could still provide their level of service that they're currently providing.
Trustee Badun.
So, this is, I know it'll be capped, because the first year was like a pilot year, right? So, you, but if, we don't want to turn away a good problem, right? If we do end up going up, again, it's increasing revenue for the district, it's giving the district exposure, right? I mean, do you, would we have plans to add another teacher if we need to?
So, part of that proposal, and I apologize, Trustee Barry, I didn't mean to say last three, four weeks, my apologies, in the Friday update, what is in there, and part of that proposal is that we have this capped number, so that we can keep the program to be very successful. If we get to a point where it is very successful, and you have more people who want to be part of the program, then we would have to add staff.
That's great.
So, we're capping it based on having success. We don't, our, our virtual program is different than many virtual programs. It's not a credit recovery. It's an actual teacher teaching the students. It's async and sync. And the difference with our virtual program is, we have teachers who are the mentors to all of the students. So, they get additional support if they need support, and that's why we have it capped, because we want to keep it a premier program.
Great news. Thank you.
It's 92.
92, yeah. We knew, we knew Mr., somebody would have it.
It's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So, it's 92 without having to hire another teacher.
Correct.
We have 50 already.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Trustee Barry opposes. And motion carries. Thank you.
So, we have three informational items. At this time, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Zainab Jawad. Badun Jawad. I always want to call her by a different last name.
It depends on how you met.
So, part of the MDE, part of the MDE requirements is something that the Board approved a couple of years back, is we give the eye-ready assessment to our students three times a year. That assessment is given in the fall, it's given in the winter, it's given in the spring. The idea behind the assessment is, we assess where students are, where they're going, and then where they end up. Through this data, we're able to make changes on the fly to help our students. Part of this, because we're paying for this out of 98B funds, we have to have a mid-year presentation on our growth, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Zainab Jawad, Badun Jawad, to discuss it, but I can say that our mid-year data is looking very good.
Good evening to all of you. So, this 98B presentation is part of the MDE requirement. Since we came out of COVID, part of what we are required to do is administer a benchmark assessment to all K to 8 students. We currently are administering to K-12 at the start of the year, and to K-12 at the end of the year, and K-8 in the middle of the year. This is only one assessment that we give as a data point, just so you all know. The 98B presentation is a requirement to be given after our second testing period, which just closed on February 17th, and after tonight's presentation, it is required to be posted on our district website as part of that compliance piece. Perfect. I'm not going to be very repetitive on this, but we do give the eye-ready assessment in the first nine weeks of school. That is part of the requirement. We give it again mid-year. It started in January and just ended on February the 17th. Again, students are tested in ELA and math across the district. Background, there you go. The benchmark assessment that our district is currently using is the eye-ready diagnostic. This is what we are using across K-12, so that, for consistency, and that we're able to progress monitor all of our students, as to see where our students are growing. Part of what we also do with this information is, we set growth targets for ELA, for Literacy and Numeracy, which is ELA and math, which is part of our district improvement plan, which trickles into all of our school improvement plans as well. I'm going to go over the elementary overall data, just so you know how it's read. For this one, for example, what we're looking for is less red and more green, obviously. If you look at the top bar, so I'm going to read it off my phone, it's just easier. If you look at the top bar, the faded part, which is the second line, is our fall diagnostic. We had 23% of our students in the red, which means they are at least two grade levels or below in math. In our winter diagnostic, that dropped to 11%. So, we are seeing growth. In addition to looking at our overall data for math and for ELA, we also look at our subgroups. We're going to skip down, you can skip down that one, Andrea. Yeah, please. This is our reading diagnostic. We're also seeing growth in that area. We had 22% of our students, 22% of our students that were in the red initially at the beginning of the year, which is very far behind, and now we're at 9%. That, again, is showing that we are making the growth. And if you look at the far end, at the green, we want to see green. We want it all to be green, which would be great, but look at the number of green on that slide in comparison to where we were in the fall. We are at about 21% in green. Looking at the winter, we're at about 52% of our students are in the green. So, we're showing significant growth, and we're seeing it across the board.
Just a quick question. The grid, the key, it says mid, above grade level, and then it says early on grade level?
Yep, and this is two or more, is the part that we're focusing most.
But, the left green key, mid or above grade level, is that right? So, that's the black shade?
That is correct.
That's the black?
That's the dark green with the black line.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
If our students all can grow into the green, that means we're successful. But, we want to see growth, even the students that are in the red moving into the yellow bar, is where the growth is, the most growth that we're going to see. The other thing that is part of this compliance piece, that we compare our overall student data with our subgroups. The three subgroups that we looked at are English learners, our special education students, and our economically disadvantaged, meaning our students that qualified for free and reduced lunch, free and reduced lunch through the process that we work on. So, all of that data is available to you to look at. Again, we will be, as a district strategic team, looking at all the data pieces come June, after we've given the third assessment, and that would be in a separate presentation to be given in more detail, and more, with more specific information about each grade, more specific, we're going to break down the data even more than this. Again, that's for math at the middle school. Again, if you see, if you're looking at the red bars, the red bars are getting shorter, the green and yellow are getting longer, that's what we're looking for, and the numbers will indicate that. We are seeing the growth that we are, that we need to see at this time of year. We are headed in the right direction to meet and surpass what we have put as our growth targets. This is our middle school reading. Again, our English learners at the middle school, our English learners reading, special education, our economically disadvantaged students. Now, there's a lot of things that the district has done to get to this point, and we continue to work on. Listed here are some, and not even all, of the initiatives that we're working on as a team. There are multiple things that are probably not even on the slide. One of the most important things that I think has moved us in that right direction is the implementation of our coaches across the district now, K to 12, and numeracy and literacy. We have a great partnership with our neighboring district in Dearborn, where they have implemented the coaching structure and model for lots of years. So, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel and bringing in professional development that doesn't necessarily meet our needs, our coaches are meeting with the coaches in Dearborn and vice versa, and they're working in collaboration, and we are finding great success in that. Our school improvement teams, whether it's at our school level or our district level, we're data-driven. The data is what's driving everything we are doing in this district. Our K-12 MTSS process, which is our multi-tiered system of support, that's a K-12 implementation. I'm very happy to say that in October, we did, we did meet compliance with 31A, which was a very, very important piece to the district that was two and a half years open. So, all of this is coming together as you see it. And again, the PLC work, including last Friday's PD with Dr. Anthony Mohammed, all of this is bringing in the pieces that we truly needed to be able to start moving in the direction that we are. On the last slide, you'll see there's parent links. A lot of these parent links are to help support our families, understand what this information means. I do know that at parent-teacher conferences, parents are, you know, their data is discussed with them, it is shared with all the parents, all student data is given to the parents at some point throughout the school year, whether it be at conferences, be it through teacher portal, be it through their own student portal, they are able to see that data. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Sabah.
Ms. Badun Jawad.
Badun. We'll go with Badun.
Ms. Badun, since I knew you and you were Badun. Question.
Anything.
How do, how do you see the information? Because I'm looking at data here, and I see the colors, and I see the spreads between five different categories, being, you know, really high, high, medium, low, and really bottom. I hate to say that. I see, I see that there are some jumps between 9 and 17% on green, on the majority of them. It's not all coming from the middle, okay? How, maybe this is for you also, Dr. Masalim. How do you approach this? Are we looking to move the middle up quicker, or are we looking to move the red out quicker? What's...
We're looking to move everybody up. The growth target is for every student, whether they're at grade level, below grade level, or somewhere in the middle. The idea is for them to meet their growth target, and that's set with the original, with the initial diagnostic in the fall. We know from that diagnostic what the student needs to meet their next growth target, and our teachers are sharing those growth targets with their students mid-year, so they know. That doesn't mean necessarily they're going to jump three grade levels.
No, no.
It just means they're going to grow.
Well, when they're one grade below, one grade level below their current grade, it's concerning, obviously. And when they're two or three, in a sense, which I'm assuming with, with the striped red, and what I mean by that, from a holistic perspective, if you're looking at this and saying, "I want to move everybody along," that means I have the resources to apply towards the bottom red, to the striped red, into the yellow, while the green gets the focus of the teachers as they need it. Correct?
So, speaking to your point, every student in the classroom, for example, if a teacher is teaching a lesson, it's taught to the entire class.
Correct.
The teacher then revisits as to which students are struggling, where are they struggling, what area specifically are they struggling in, and then we move into, from tier one intervention, you know, that's where the teacher is responsible for tier one interventions. That's where the teacher in the classroom works with small groups.
Is that self-identified struggling, or is this report?
No, this is all data-driven.
Okay.
And oftentimes, it is not just the eye-ready diagnostic that shows us that that student. For this presentation specifically, we just needed to use the benchmark assessment, which is the eye-ready. Oftentimes, it's three data points that we look at. We never look at just one. That's where we determine our tier one intervention versus our support staff intervention versus our tier three interventions, and those interventions have to work together. So, if the teacher in the classroom is supporting the bottom 30% in the classroom in a tier two, there's also a support person that comes in, whether it's the literacy teacher, whether it's the Title I teacher, whether it's the EL teacher, that's how those supports, that's where the multi-system of, the multi-tier system of support really plays a huge role.
Nice progress. We need to see a lot more.
Absolutely.
The numbers are moving in the right, the trends are good. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
If I, President, if I could just add something. The thing back to literacy and numeracy coaches, that is going to be, I believe, the key for us to continue to move forward as we grow the PLC. The literacy and numeracy coaches went through an interview process. Every one of them that was selected through that interview process are highly effective teachers who do these strategies. So, them going into the classrooms and working with different teachers, it's really helped. And that collaboration, as Zainab mentions, in terms of, you know, Dr. Lazar and Zainab and Joel, they've been working on this. That collaboration with Dearborn is also helping us, because we're not reinventing the wheel. I want to reemphasize that. You know, there's a lot, you know, the state always says, there needs to be cross-district collaboration. And because we have that, that connection to them, we share many students who have many similar needs, that that collaboration, and actually, I spoke to Mrs. Thotman Faraj just the other day, because we were talking about this collaboration, and she even said to me, because she's the executive director in Dearborn that oversees what Dr. Lazar and Zainab and them are doing, she even said to me that the Dearborn teachers are also learning a lot from our teachers. So, it's really beneficial, and it's really exciting, the direction we're going.
I also have to add in addition that, that everything that we are doing is what's helping us to come out of some of the situations from prior, whether it be at the MDE compliance or meeting DOJ compliance, hopefully very soon, any of these things, all these things that you're seeing happen, whether it's PLC, the coaching implementation model, the co-teaching, the multi-tier support system, these are the things that are moving this district in a direction to be not only compliant now, but compliant continuing and moving forward.
Great. Trustee Amon?
Just, I just have a few questions. First, I mean, you guys are doing an amazing job. Like, see, we see the, the jumps, but, you know, I noticed the jumps in elementary score are huge, but middle school's not. And, and just a few questions are, like, what resource staff helps, helps in the middle skew, middle school, and do we have enough? I mean, how many do we have? And also, is there a way we can give these kids incentives? Because we all know, if you give a kid a test, and you tell them, "Here's this test, we're going to take it," and they're going to mess around through it. If they're getting a half day at the end of the day, they're going to be like, "Okay, let me just do this and get out of here." Is there a way we can give incentives to help the middle school?
So, I'm going to say about, not to talk about the incentive thing, Ms. O'Hara and I today were visiting through, through our school improvement walk. There was, we walked into a classroom, the teacher was telling the students during their enrichment period, I think it was, I believe it was sixth grade, and she said, "We can't have a reward for our eye-ready goals today, because it's raining outside, and we want to make sure..." Teachers are giving incentives within their classroom, within grade levels, within teams, that is happening. And for students at the elementary, I think it's, you're going to see, regardless of what data you look at, you're going to see growth occur at the elementary between K-5, much, much more than you will see it in the middle school. That's just a nat, I believe that's just a natural process, being literacy and numeracy. Now, when you're asking about what support staff do we currently have at the middle school?
Do we have enough?
We have, I believe we do. I believe that we are targeting the students that we need to target, and with every teacher doing tier one support in the classroom, and layering that with their own tier two support, before the intervention team can even, does, even has to come in, that's where we are going to see kids being pushed and growing.
Appreciate it.
Trustee Amon, I think it's also important to note that the coaching model has probably been around longer in the elementary school than it has in the middle and the high school. I think any of the literacy and numeracy coaches, those positions in the middle school and the high school have been created in this administration. And so, it's a matter of really working with those coaches and defining that role, and that's some of the work that we're doing. We're working with that team this year to really identify what it is they do in the classroom and how they can help, because it is new. And then, next year, the coaches then will be ready to roll out and really define what it looks like. This was their first year fully implementing the coaching model, specifically at the secondary level, and so, they've been able to feel out kind of, you know, where the areas are, how to incorporate the MTSS process into that and really strengthen it, and then go from there, so that they, the teachers know what to expect when a coach is doing a cycle in their classroom and vice versa. So, I really feel that, that along with the fact that teachers are really starting to get their hands into the data. I actually, prior to this board meeting, was invited to sit in on the SIP meeting at Highview, and just listening to them and getting some feedback from them as to what they feel has really helped the scores jump the way they did at that building specifically. And they did say that part of it was, they're looking at the data in a different way. They're looking at it more in-depth and really using it to narrow down where they need supports and how to move those around. So, I feel confident in the fact that, as we continue to grow that coaching model, we will see these scores go up even more than they have.
When this administration took over, there was one literacy coach in the entire district.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking.
One, at the elementary, since then...
Parents were talking about that before. That's why I was asking, do we have enough?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have another question from Trustee Badun.
So, first of all, I love seeing the eye-ready data. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
I think we're moving in the right direction. I think Dr. Masalim, probably, I don't know, 15, 16 months ago, he said, "It's going to take some time, we're moving," and I haven't seen them drop, which is great. We're going up. I think what I caught was an average of 13 to 14% across the board, which is good, right? One thing I would like to see, and this is, this is an ask, it's not a tell, so take it back and see if you could think about how to do it, and I'm not in a hurry to say it, by the way, but I'd like to see how the eye-ready scores correlate to the report cards. So, I know the honor roll list just came out, right? So, I think that will help us put together a data point to show where our curriculum is against the eye-ready curriculum. I think that will help us, as a district, move forward, because what if our curriculum shows that these honor roll kids have like blew, blew this out of the water, right? And then, the, some of the kids that are maybe struggling on their report cards, they might be great test takers, and they're nailed in the eye-ready. test takers and they're nailed in the I-ready. I think that'll help us from a resource perspective, because I think Trustee Amon asked about resources. I think this is a great way where we could open up our eyes a little bit and shift our resources, right? Maybe we know this group of kids tests great in I-ready, but they're not doing their homework at night, and they're just not doing well on their report cards. So then we know that's something that's gotta go back to the parents for support.
And it's super important to look at data points, not only just I-ready, but looking at elementary, for example, at the BASS scores, or looking at PSAT scores, and looking at the M-step scores, and looking at, those are all key pieces. This, I struggle with this presentation a lot because it's just a snapshot of what we're doing just for compliance, and I hate to say, we're doing it for compliance. I'm hoping that when the district strategic team presents at the end of the year, you'll see that correlation of data much better. You'll get a much better understanding of how that data is all intertwining and where our, our ELs in comparison, why are they struggling on the WEADA but not necessarily struggling on the M-step, or why is a special ed student struggling in math but not, all these things are going to be looked at. And again, three years in, Ms. O'Hara and I just celebrated our third anniversary, we've seen a significant change in culture on how we use data to drive the instruction and data to drive the discussions. And that's a piece we really, really needed.
Thank you.
I think it's important to compare the testing. I don't know necessarily about the grades, because I just feel like those are two different philosophies of learning, or two different strategies, but I mean, I'm sure we could just look at it.
I think that looking at all the pieces is important.
Yeah.
For us.
It's easier for the middle school and the elementaries. At the high school level, you're not learning how to read, obviously.
Well, we are.
Well, yeah.
No, we are.
They are.
Okay.
Depends on who's coming.
I take that back, yes.
No, and, and you know, I, I will say this, as a former high school English teacher, I did, if, if I knew as a teacher what I know now, I would have been a hundred times better teacher. And that's what, where we come in, and we're trying to change that mindset. There's just two things I'd like to add really quick. Something that Zainab mentioned that's very important, a district strategic team. It is not the superintendent and Dr. Lazar and Andrew O'Hara and Penny and, and Zainab doing it all. These are teachers, coaches, administrators, it's a team. And each school has that school improvement team, and this is the first year of that. Additionally, this was the first year that we reallocated all staff in the middle school to only teach in their highly qualified area. At, I thought it was like ninety-six percent of our teachers are teaching one prep, which means they're only teaching math, they're only teaching language arts. So this is the first year of that as well, and we teamed the teachers. And we're currently, Andrea and I are currently working on, with the Riverside team, their schedule to make some additional adjustments. So the thing that we have going here is, and I think when, I, we had the momentum, and it's changing the mindset. And, and that takes time. And it takes time in the middle school and the high school to change the mindset where we gotta narrow it down, we gotta do the small group instruction. Elementary, it's natural, you know. I'm excited for the direction we're going, and our school administrators are working with their school improvement teams, and they're identifying where the gaps are. And Dr. Lazar, Zainab and Joel, they've been jumping into those school improvement plans, talking with them, getting feedback. So it's not a one-shot, it's continuous. And at the end of the year, that district strategic team will be presenting to you the entire process.
Trustee Barry?
If you recall, when all this started, I had asked the question about trainings and how much training are we giving these instructional coaches? What have we done differently from the very beginning to now to provide them with the trainings?
So which, so there, they had.
Instructional coaches, especially at the middle school?
Yeah, so they have attended, and they actually, I think, have one coming up in March too, through the county. So we have sent them to, like, formalized professional development when those come up through the county. I can't remember the name of.
The Wayne County Coaching Network.
Yep, thank you.
So do we know approximately how many they've been to?
So that one is a cohort, right, Zainab? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe that.
So they go several times, so it's kind of like a coaching academy. So they've gone several times throughout the year to that, and they discuss like different topics each time that are relevant to their position. And again, we added the component where they are learning peer-to-peer, colleague-to-colleague with the coaches from the Dearborn district as well.
So they have somebody to reach out to in case?
Yep.
And we've also had the solution tree training, the professional learning, community training, and Dr. Anthony Muhammad's professional development, which brings that all together. So there's continuous, continuous dialogue, and they have time themselves to get together and dialogue.
And we've allowed time also for them to go over there and shadow for a day to see how the day runs and what it looks like in different environments, and then take those pieces and bring back what works best for us.
So we're sending our staff over to Dearborn?
Mm-hmm, and we've invited them to come over and shadow here as well, yep.
Good. You learn a lot from them.
All right, thank you, Zainab.
You are very welcome.
Appreciate you.
You are very welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Baydu.
You're very welcome.
We get to see higher numbers.
And we will.
It's only the winter numbers, we still have till June.
Well, I'm saying, like, in the, in the spring, when we get higher numbers.
We, we hope, we're working on it. The next thing is an informational item, because it's the second board policy, second reading for the zero-zero-zero board bylaws. You received, the board received those bylaws. What you received is all the updates that the board requested. And there, if there's any questions, please let us know, because then the next meeting, we will vote that policy in, zero-zero-zero, zero, the four zeros. And then in our study session, next study session, I'm requesting if we can meet at five o'clock, so that we can start looking at one thousands and possibly add in two thousands with it.
Excuse me, but what's the date?
Next Monday.
Okay.
It's a week from tonight. Then you won't see me for three weeks, and then we'll be back together again. We're hoping to get one thousands for sure, and then possibly mix in two thousands. We can knock out two sets of policies next week, Monday. As we continue moving through these policies, it's, it's a lot more legal stuff where we can't make many changes. And you'll see in the next set of policies is very minimal, very minimal changes, like it's literally a word here, word there. And a lot of it has to do with what we discussed in the previous, like inform, update, different things as such. So you'll see that coming.
Trustee Fawaz?
Does this going to reflect the, how some board members requested to have some of the questions or statements separate, so they're not all voted on in one? There was like three, three of them, I believe?
There was a few that we had polled.
There's only one that I'm aware of, that I remember that was pulled.
Which one was that?
And that was the one in, that was requested to be pulled, that was the one in reference to board members holding positions of authority outside of the Board of Education.
There was another about board member pays.
And then board, I apologize, and then board member paid, those were the two, yes.
That is still in here, unless Green means it's gonna be struck?
Yeah, no, it's just, because we can pull it, because the request was the.
It's gonna be voted on, okay.
This is just the reading, when we vote it, it'll be pulled.
Yeah.
So it's not really indicated in here what items we're gonna vote on?
So you're voting on all the items?
Right.
So what would happen is, there would be, there would be three sets of votes. The first set of vote would be policies one through ten. The second vote would be policy eleven. The third vote would be policy twelve, because then those two policies would be pulled out for separate roll call votes.
Okay.
Okay.
So yes, the, the financial piece, as well as the president, uh, president, my apologies, the, the presidential power, or whatever it may be.
One more? One more that we pulled?
There was a third one, I can't recall.
There was a third one, I just can't.
I wasn't.
I know we were talking about the wording of, can, can a person's statements reflect, doesn't necessarily, I think we were.
Well, communication.
Talking about, yeah, the word necessarily, whether it should be in there or not. I know we had a long discussion on that.
I thought we agreed, we didn't vote that one.
Yeah, that wasn't a separate.
Wasn't agree, I don't know, I just.
The, the two I remember is the pay and the, uh, position of authority.
I know it was the pay of the board members, it was the, what was that second one?
The position of authority.
Position of authority. I know that those two were pulled for sure.
The other one we didn't pull, but we updated the wording.
We updated the wording in a lot of them, yes.
Yeah, we updated the wording, unnecessary, I remember the necessary one.
Yeah, it was a long discussion on one word.
The third one after discussion, it was updated, and then it was. That's what I thought.
Not him, requested to be pulled any further.
Correct.
Right.
It was clarified.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just the two were pulled.
Do you have one though, Mo?
No, I'm just looking at the term. How long ago did they transfer from four to six years?
That was when I was, I think I was still a principal at that time, might have been two thousand fifteen, fourteen.
Is that pretty common across school districts, or are we?
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing that across a lot of school districts, that six is the common number.
Because of cost.
Yeah. The idea too is that you don't have all your board members up at the same time.
Yeah.
Which is a nightmare for me, I ain't gonna lie.
Because you lose knowledge, everybody's.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, next item?
And I just want to thank everyone for all their continued support. I had a commentary, but I, I lost what it is. So if I remember, I'll put it next time. And I just want to continue moving forward and have been a successful district.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll go to public comment. Thank you. Najah, do you want us to read you the, this meeting of the board?
No, it's just really quick, I was just gonna answer any questions you guys had about the Cedar Point trip, that's all.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so, I can't remember what you guys asked.
Somebody had asked.
Seventy-five or sixty-five?
Was it seventy-five or sixty-five?
Yeah, no, it was seventy-five. Originally, it was only gonna be sixty-five, so that's why the mistake was there, because we included a drink pass with the ticket. So.
Okay.
The kids will have a drink pass, the all-day drink pass. What else was there? There was, somebody else asked.
Your staff?
Staff, there are staff attending. There's, right now, there's limited chaperones on the, we're trying to leave it open for as many students as possible, because we can only get three charter buses. So each bus holds fifty-six passengers. We set about ten chaperones between those three buses. If we don't get a hundred and fifty-eight kids sign up to go, then they'll leave more room for any chaperones that wanna be on the bus. Otherwise, they can drive their own car. We do have several staff members that are, are planning on going. What else? I know there was something else.
Somebody had asked about permissions, I think Trustee Sabo had asked about permissions, slips and insurance.
Oh, and then that was answered.
Liability, but that's been cleared.
I do, I do have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that you, you're taking a bunch of chaperones and some staff with you, and are they gonna be spread out through Cedar Point, where each one's gonna have a station that they're gonna be sitting at, and the kids will know where they're at, they need them?
So, it's in the permissions, but basically, they will all have the chaperones, they'll be, depending on how many kids come, we'll divvy them up, we'll allow them to pick their group. They're all going to be wearing, they're told if they're coming with us, they have to wear the exact same shirt. We're ordering a shirt for each student, each chaperone, so we can identify our students throughout the park. They do a midday check-in with their chaperone, and it's, it'll all be explained. Again, it's in the permissions, they all meet at two o'clock, check-in with their chaperone at, at one of the rides, the Matterhorn.
So you have it all planned out?
It's all planned out, it's just, yeah, we just will then, again, go over it with, once we know who's coming, we will then send specifics again to those students and maybe even have, we wanted to try to get that ahead, like way ahead of time, so we have enough time to really drill that in their head. We put out, you know, they have to be, nope, they cannot be failing any classes by May, I think, twenty, sometime towards the end of May. They cannot from February fifteenth, when we first made the announcement in the auditorium, from that day on, cannot be, cannot be suspended. No truancy issues, so absences, tardies, like there, we just want to make sure that those that are gonna participate are doing what they're supposed to be doing in school. I don't know.
So the kids have phone numbers for all the chaperones?
They will, when, when they're assigned their chaperone, we can give them, I mean, I told them they can all have my number, I don't, I don't care. But then, when they're assigned their chaperone, we'll make sure that they have the adult chaperone, you know, their chaperone's number as well. We're asking for all of their phone numbers as well, in the permission slip, as well as their parents, so that way, if there's any issues.
So they'll be grouped up in twos? If, if a pair is missing, you'll know a pair is missing, because group number thirteen is not there.
Right, so depend, we wanted to see how many we get to sign up. And then we'll determine, you know, they can obviously, their groups can be bigger if they choose to, you know, go in bigger groups, but at least we know who is with who throughout the day, yeah.
Thank you. Any other question? Trustee Baydu?
Will you have access, or at least prior to going, emergency card?
That's why we have our staff. So that's why we have staff coming, and we'll have all of that information, we'll be able to match with the students. Somebody, a staff member will have, will have that information, yeah.
So just as a recommendation, I'm thinking like when we travel to different schools for supporting events, right? We make copies of the emergency cards, just so you have it?
Yeah.
And then also, anybody that needs EpiPens and all that, just make sure you have that before you, I know this is not the first time you do it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, obviously, we just need to see who's coming. And then, if there are students that need special accommodations, then we, oh, I know the other question was about anybody that cannot participate or afford the ticket.
They can afford.
What we did was, we created sponsorship or grant forms for every student, so the teachers let the students know that there are sponsorship forms if they need assistance with paying for a ticket. So the PTA, this is what we're fundraising for throughout the year. So we have the funds, if anybody cannot afford to pay for the ticket, the PTA has already said that they could fill out this form, it can be handed in discreetly, you know, anonymously to their, not anonymously, but discreetly to their teacher, and then we can pay for their ticket for them, so. That was already covered.
Can you let us know if anything's needed outside of the realm that you?
We can, I mean, I can, but like I said, we have, we have the money. I mean, we just, I know we had another parent.
We can talk, talk after.
Okay, another parent at our PTA meeting that kind of said that he'd sponsor a couple of kids, and I said, obviously, I don't want to take that good deed away from him if he, you know, if he wanted to do so, but we did let him know that we, we've already put it out there. I, I guess we just have to see if there's anybody with that. And I did, we had a couple of kids ask some questions, and I reached out to their social workers and just said, can you also look in and, and, you know, the questions kind of made me feel like maybe there was some concern on their, their end as well, and, but I never heard back from the social worker, so.
Thank you.
But, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Najah.
And thanks for planning that, I know that that's not easy.
Nope, no problem.
All right, so, Trustee Barry did bring to my attention, there was a third item, and now I remember it, now that she says it. It was positions of leadership that we were pulling, board members holding positions of leadership.
Outside of the board.
Outside of the board.
Right.
Also, board members pay.
Mm-hmm.
It was between fifty and a hundred. And conferences, limiting conferences to like national conferences or local conferences.
Oh, that's right.
That, that was one.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was, okay, thank, I thought that was a great thought.
We did, we did pull that, and I wrote them down, Yusuf, if you wanna.
I got it, my, I, I sent an email to the team from the meeting, so we have all the notes together.
Perfect. So those, those were the three that we did want to pull. Okay, great. Uh, now we'll go to board member comments. Trustee Sabo, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Ms. Bazey and Ms. Salome, and their fantastic students, Cesar Awada, Daniel Awada, Ava Jabber, Nova Owens, Serene Rizka, and Alenia Seen. You guys did a fantastic job helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. I also want to, I know tonight we voted on a new athletic director. I want to thank Mr. Mike Berry, who has, has helped fill that role with the gap and, and the interim role. For those of you that don't know Coach Mike Berry, he is a, he's an icon in this entire area, from the time he was in high school all the way through modern day. He's done everything we've ever asked of him, and I think Dr. Masalim can attest that he is a what-can-I-do-to-help kind of guy, and I want to thank him for that. Also, I was saddened yet happy for Mr. Leon Wallace. I think very highly of Mr. Wallace, he's always been a fantastic person to engage with, and, and he has so much passion for the kids. I'm, I'm sad to lose him, but I'm happy for him, because this is a great career opportunity for him. So Mr. Wallace, if you're watching, thank you for everything that you've done here at the school district. You have assuredly left a legacy with many of the kids and, and many of the parents and coaches that have worked with you, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Williamson?
Thank you. I'd like to, first of all, thank everybody who came up with the tin can raffle. It turned out to be a great success. Everybody participated, all the parents who helped. Nicole Hotty would like to extend her heartfelt thanks to all the district staff who helped out. She said, you guys did great, and she really appreciates, especially, Mike's done a lot for her too, letting her sit in for concessions and, and stuff like that where normally they wouldn't. Another announcement is high school and the eighth grade have a band festival at Livoni Stevenson on March ninth. The Riverside is actually only the eighth grade, they play at eleven fifty on that day, and then the high school will play at eight fifteen. Basically, it's, it's not a competition, it's a festival. They will play, they play four songs, three songs that they get ahead of time, and then one song they just, they get the music and they gotta play it, and they've never seen it before. They got a score from one to four, and with one being the best, so. Good luck to all of them. There will be a preview of that show this Wednesday at Riverside, starting at seven o'clock, both the eighth and the high school will be playing that night. And then the last thing I have is March eleventh, the Drama is having a snack and stroll craft and vendor show at the high school cafeteria from ten to three. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
With Mr. Williamson, I, I was able to make it to the tin can raffle, and I was very pleased to see the turnout, and glad to hear that they were successful, and hopefully this tradition can be carried on to the next class. Thank you.
Trustee Amon?
I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Bazey and Ms. Salome's class for doing the pledge allegiance. Also, like what Trustee Sabo said, thank you, big thank you to Coach Mike Berry, who's done a lot for the district and done a lot for the sports programs over the years. When I started here with them about eight years ago, I, I met him, I've known him for a long time, but I've saw, I, I've seen him do so much, and he gives so much back to the kids, and, and I want to thank him for everything he's done. And also want to say, give a happy belated birthday to Dr. Masalim and Trustee Fawaz.
Thank you.
Hope you guys enjoyed it.
Thank you.
You guys gotta pay attention.
Happy birthday.
And that's about it, thank you very much.
Happy birthday to you, Mr. Trustee Amon.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it his birthday too?
It was before ours.
Oh, my gosh, happy birthday.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I did say earlier that the honor roll list did come out. I'm glad, talking about the middle school honor roll list, I'm glad it's lengthy, which is really nice. Hopefully, it gets longer and longer. Congratulations to every student that worked hard. that worked hard to become on honor roll and also the four-point-oh students, um, whose name are embold on that list. Uh, again, I just want to say congratulations. Um, there's a, a lot going on, uh, outside still, right? I know the weather hasn't been very cooperative. Dr. Masalim and Ms. Morgan, I know you guys' heads are spinning because of the weather a lot. But, um, I do want to talk about a little bit about last week and, and the weeks prior and even today with all the rain. Um, I just want to thank everyone who, I mean, the whole staff, everyone, from the teachers, uh, even the students, because they're staying up later to see whether they're schooled or not. Some students don't have power. Um, it's unfortunate, but I just want to say, I know it's not easy. I know you have, if not one, but all board members texting, uh, at night. Dr. Masalim going through, trustee, President Zaya. It, it's, it's not easy, right? I just want to say thank you to everybody who's involved and keeps us up to date. Um, cause I know I'm one of that annoying people that always texts and asks for information. So thank you for that. Um, also, you know, I, I just want to touch on, you know, everyone needs to understand that this is, this position here, you know, we're parents first, right? We have parents in the district. I mean, we have children in the district. Um, and we try to do what's best, not only, you know, for our kids, but all the kids in the district. So I want to keep that in perspective in our vision and our goals as board members. We want the district to succeed, not individuals. Cause if we go and look at the whole district and where it's going in the future, from the construction to the, to the change and, you know, the change in administration, right? This, this is not, it's not old, right? This is a fairly new administration. We have board members that haven't been here. It's going to continuously revolve and change. I just want to say, you know, let's keep pushing for the better and, uh, keep our horizon clear. That's it.
Trustee Fawaz?
Thanks for the birthday wishes. Um, fun getting older. Um, I'll echo everyone's sentiments. Loved having the kids come and read the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. Very cute. Um, also, of course, thank you to, uh, the coach. And the Tin Can Raffle was so much fun. Um, we did get a chance to make it out, had a lot of fun and glad it was successful. And, um, I know my kids and I'm sure a lot of kids, even all their friends were very happy to get their extended, um, vacation last week. Um, but hopefully everyone has their power back on or close to and stay safe and warm. Thank you.
Me? Um, so I just, first of all, would like to start off by saying, day in and day out, you know, we send our kids to school. We send them to, you know, wherever they're going and we hope and pray that they're always safe. But, um, you know, there's some, been some recent events, uh, the earthquakes in Turkey and Syria, a lot of lives lost there. And, um, of course, you know, I'm sure nobody has put out of their mind that the tragic incident at Michigan State University. And, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask that we just observe a moment of silence for, uh, for those victims. I should have done that actually, um, in the beginning of the meeting, but, um, I'd like to do it now before we close. Uh, so just a moment of silence for those victims, please. Thank you. Um, I want to remind everybody that Wednesday, March first, uh, is the beginning of March's reading month. And I encourage all of our board members, I know that, um, some of us here have done it before. Get into the classrooms if you can and read to the students. It's so much fun. Um, I, I've always enjoyed it, especially like the younger kids. And, um, I just want to remind our parents that we're always here. If you need anything, or if you feel like you have a student at home who needs anything, please reach out to Dr. Masalim, reach out to the staff, reach out to your principals, your teachers. We're always here to help. Uh, you know, we recently, uh, shot a video, Dr. Masalim and I, a call to the, uh, the community that we need your help in sending that message to the kids that, you know, student safety is first. And we want that message to be grilled in at home as well as, um, at the school. So it's, it's a great partnership. We want to work with you and we want you to work with us. Um, and that's really all I have.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Sabo.
You know, I'd like to congratulate the other passion you have in your life and the organization, the Amity Foundation on a ten-year anniversary dinner that you recently had. And all the great things that you've done around, not just Michigan, but around the world and helping people that are going through disasters. I'm sorry I wasn't in town to attend, but I know it was a great function.
Thank you.
And we're very proud of everything that you guys have been able to accomplish. Thank you and your husband and your daughters and all the volunteers that you have at the Amity Foundation for everything that you guys do.
Thank you, Mom. I appreciate it. Thank you. It's not just us. Honestly, it's the entire community.
Correct.
And that's the beauty of it, seeing everybody come together for good. But I, I appreciate the sentiments so much. Thank you very much. Uh, I think that's all. And we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All right. Moved by trustee Sabo, supported by trustee Baydun to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one, right?